You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Town of Swansea Planning Board Meeting.
Meeting of the Planning Board here at Whitcomb Hall, and I'll begin with the roll call. Scott Self, that's me, I'm here. Richard Lane.
Yeah.
Jane Johnson.
Here.
Brandon Self is not here. Michael York.
Here.
Victoria Ames.
Here.
And Bill Hutwoker, Selectmen's Rep, and he is not here. And Steve Malone, alternate.
Here.
Is here. And Michael Scungeo, alternate, is not here. And Brian Vertigal, alternate, is not here. And I will sit Steve for Brandon. And I will read the agenda, which is, we have applications for public hearings. Item A is a public, it will be a subdivision application, public hearing. Cardinal surveying and land planning requests a two lot subdivision on behalf of Judy L. Driscoll for the property located at 39 Warmack Road. Subject property is shown at tax map 26, Lot 11-2 in the Rural Agricultural District. Then under other business and discussions, we have a preliminary conceptual consultation with a conservation subdivision, Judd Dexter. And we have our preliminary conceptual consultation with FW website plan review. And we have a conservation commission, a wildlife habitat natural resource protection audit, possibly a plan reading workshop, and any other business as may be required. So getting back to the top of things, we need a regional impact vote if anything on our agenda requires us to notify the surrounding towns. Motion by Richard Lane that we do not need regional impact. Is there any, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Steve Malone. Is there any further discussion? Then all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we have minutes of May 11th, 2023. Does anybody have anything on those minutes? And if not, a motion to accept them as presented would be in order.
So moved.
Motion by Victoria to accept the May 11th, 2023 minutes as submitted. Is there a second? Seconded by Jane Johnson. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And that brings us to our first item, item A. That's the subdivision application. It's a minor subdivision. And I thought that maybe we could just go over it on the checklist to make sure everything's there, to see if the application is complete.
27 waivers suggested by the other team.
Let's get to those first. And well, yeah, let's go to those first before we go over the... Now, let's read the, we'll do the waivers afterwards. Let's make sure everything's on the plan. And we'll just, they've got it marked on here that they're having to waivers on their checklist. So just, anybody grab the drawing in front of you there and really make sure that everything's on here. I'll go over the list. So we've got the proposed subdivision name and title, which is right down here on the title block. Well, we'll look at that. And the name and address of the owner, which we've got up here under the notes. That's usually where we find it. And the scale of 1 inch 30 equals 30 feet. They're asking for a waiver on that one. And let's see, they've got 1 inch equals 50 feet because it fits better on the paper there. Get to the waiver. North Arrow, we see it up top on the left. Got that there. Locust Plan, we see that in the very top right-hand corner. Give us the vicinity of where the thing is. And we have a name, license number, and seal of the surveyor. This is right down here on the bottom right-hand there. And boundary and survey, including bearings, distances, and locations of permanent markers. And we see the boundaries, markers in the corners. We see the location, and we see the distances, the directions of them laid out on the flat. And this is another waiver item. Location and profiles with elevations of existing water mains, sewer culverts, drains, and proposed connections or alternative means of providing water supply and sewer disposal. And they're asking for a waiver because there's no public sewer there. We'll be putting a septic system. Let's see. Item nine, existing and proposed easements, rights of way, buildings, watercourses, ponds, standing water, rock, ledges, stone walls, and other essential site features. And there aren't too many here. There's a couple of buildings, the barn and a building here. That's a site feature there. Don't see too much else on it there. But we'll take their word for it then. It's on there. And location of property lines, including entire undivided lot, lot areas, and frontage on public right-of-way. And we see the entire lot outlined for us. See the frontage on the public way, which is Warmack Road, right in the front there, laid out in the distances. And item 11, tax map and lot number according to the Town of Swansea numbering system, right in the center of the lot. We've got map 26, Lot 11, 02, 01. They've got, this is the main one right here, right? Okay, map 26, Lot 11, 02. That's the main one. That's a secondary one for the...
That's the proposed.
That's the proposed lot for the 11, 02, 01. Okay, there it is, 01. Yep. Let's see. Existing and proposed topographical contour boundaries of five-foot intervals. And as we see them, we've run over four of the lines. We can see that it's fairly, fairly flat by 25, 10, by 15. Nice flat piece of land there, except the right-hand corner. And location of groundwater. I think there's something running through that property over there, isn't there? There's a stream, a stream on the right-hand side.
It's a cove.
Yeah. Because we can look on the legend on the left-hand side. It tells us what, there's a stream on there. And we can see that right over here. And you see perk tests and test results. They're looking for a waiver on that because they don't have anything planned on it. They're just subdividing, and it's over five acres. Let's see. Soil mapping types, slopes and boundaries. So we've got the soil types. We see 308, is it? 10B. And we've got, yeah, listed up on our left-hand sides under the soils legend. We've got 10B, 24B. Okay, it's 30B. And it tells us what, basically what the soils are. Pretty well drained over there. And deed restrictions. Don't know if there are any deed restrictions or not, but maybe. But they've got it checked off here. I don't see anything here. Are there any deed restrictions on there?
There are none.
Okay. And open space to be preserved, which, although there's any, nothing being preserved on there. It's just, okay. Okay. Existing buildings and other man-made structures to remain. And the buildings we see on the left-hand lot there, there's a barn there, and there's an existing dwelling there, see on the map. And existing and proposed streets with classes named and right-of-way widths. Let's see. The existing streets would be the Warmack Road right there. Nothing else coming in here. And let's see. Final road profiles and cross-sections. They're asking for a waiver there because they aren't putting any roads in the property. All drainage and erosion control plans approved by the CCCD if applicable, and it's not applicable. And they're asking for a waiver on that one. State subdivision, septic approval. And they're asking for a waiver there because it's over five acres. Each lot is over five acres. And state highway municipal access permit if applicable. And they're asking for a waiver on that. But we probably should have them determine somewhere where the driveway is going to be going, you know, when we get talking to them about it. So, let's see. So it looks like they've got everything on there. Do we have any questions? What isn't on there, anybody?
What's CCCD?
I don't know what that stands for. Sarah, where's that?
Please, an instruction over the Conservation District.
Oh, thank you, Jane, the expert on the board. Okay. So if it looks complete, then a motion that the application is complete and ready for public hearing would be in order.
So moved.
Question? Oh, just wait. We have a motion by Victoria that the application is complete and ready to go to a public hearing. Do we have a second? Seconded by Steve Malone. Any further discussion? Yes.
So this whole section is going to be developed with a future date. So that would have to be, that would have to come back before the board if they're going to be put in a road or anything that's involved in their home, septic, et cetera.
No, the Planning Board has jurisdiction over subdivisions and jurisdiction over business, but not residential. If they're putting more than duplex in there, they'd have to come back. If they put a road in there, a driveway they're going to put in there, they would have to go to the road agent for the driveway because he signs off on that. But other than that, it would be code enforcement. They wouldn't be in front of us. Okay, we have a motion on the floor and a second that the application is complete and ready to go to a public hearing. Any further discussion? And all those in favor can do the same. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it's accepted. And now we will go, I will open the public hearing and make the presentation. We're ready for you.
Do we need to go on waivers first?
Oh, sorry about that. Yeah, we went to, should have done that first. They asked for the waivers, and we have a list of those waivers here. I have them. And it's, the waivers they're asking for are item number three, has to do with the scale. Item number eight has to do with the water and sewer mains. Number 14, about the perk test results. And item number 20, the final road profiles. Item number 21, which is the drainage control plans. Item number 22, state subdivision approval. And item number 23, the state highway and municipal access permit. And they're asking for a waiver on those. So...
So if it's a town road, it would be only a municipal access permit?
It would be, and that would be done by the road agent. Yeah, with their driveway is...
So I'm not concerned, but shouldn't that be indicated on the subdivision plan that there is a way? I mean, we know...
We usually require that to be indicated on there. Yeah. I see they've got an existing gravel field entrance, but I don't know if that's going to be the one or not. But we usually request that it's indicated where a driveway could be put. It doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be there because the road agent may change it. They know I want it here or there.
I think right now it's just some crushed rock that goes into...
Yeah.
Starts up.
Yeah, just after the bridge. Or the culvert. Just after the culvert.
So to me, that feels like a technicality, but probably it should be shown.
Are you saying you don't want to grant them that part of the waiver? And the other waiver's fine? Is that what you mean? Or are you just questioning that?
I'm just, I mean, I'm not concerned about this particular situation, but it seems like it should be indicated, you know, on the paperwork, that there is, it is possibility to put a driveway on there.
Yeah.
And where that might go.
We can put that as an addition because we usually do require it.
Let's do that.
For, Jane? Didn't, but recently we had, recently we had been making them demonstrate that they could put an access to the lot, to the property.
And that's what you mean, they...
And that's what we're talking about here. And they, you know, they've got plenty of site distance on this property. If you look at the location map and stuff there, they won't have a problem with it that I see. They do have a gravel entrance right there to the property, which I suppose could be used as a driveway. Whether they'll use it as a driveway or not, we don't know. So I guess it comes down to that waiver, the one about the access permit. And we aren't making them have a permit anyways. It's just that they need to show it on the plans, usually where one can be. And they have shown something there.
I had a question on the perk test for the...
Yeah.
For the water.
Item number 14.
Yeah. And then you created the plot.
So they're asking for a waiver on that because this is over five acres. It does not have to go to the state to get them to approve a septic on it. And they aren't proposing where a septic is right now. They're just proposing a subdivision. When they do come in with a septic designer, they will have to do the perk test and the code enforcement will have to make sure that it's up to par and can support a subsurface disposal system. In other words, a septic system.
And it'll have to be approved by the state at that point, anyway.
Oh, yeah, that's, at that point, yeah.
Yeah.
But not to be subdivided because of...
No, not to be subdivided, no.
And what you told us about soils, you know, we know that all these, we'll have no problem with that either.
Yeah, by the looks of their, yeah, they're, they're, they're with that. So getting back to the waivers.
I move that we grant the waivers.
Okay, and motion, okay, we'll get, we need a second too. Motion by Michael York to grant all of the waivers that they're asking for, all seven of them. Is there a second? Seconded by Richard Lane. Is there any further discussion on the waivers? Then all those, you know, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay. So now we can go to public hearing.
Okay.
Now I'll officially open the public hearing.
All right. So maybe follow to Cardinal Survey. This is, as you read in the agenda, just a very simple subdivision. It's 12.31 acres. This is Warmack Road. Route 32 is over here, the first block in on the right. There's an existing house and barn. All we want to do is basically split it and have, it's beautiful, beautiful field, beautiful soils. Seen any problem with future building, but there is no plans at this point to develop that.
Okay.
About it.
Other than that, right?
It's about it.
There's nothing else to say about it.
There is that stream on the side, but it should impact. I mean, it's on the boundary of the impacts, you know, the outside or septic or anything else.
And they've got the frontage requirements on the road.
Frontage requirements, yes.
And I see, you know, we just discussed that entrance into this new lot that you're making there, down at the bottom there, the gravel field entrance there. Is that a proposed driveway or is that just existing?
That's existing. That's where they come into hay to field.
Okay.
It is quite a nice entrance, but without knowing where they might go.
It may not be the driveway.
Right. I could put a driveway, like you said, there's no problem, site distance or anything else.
Yeah, there isn't much there. The road agent will either approve it or not approve it. You know, you have to go to them for, or they will have to go to them for the permit.
Is there a stone wall along there going west of that entrance on your proposing lot?
Up here?
Yes.
No.
There is no stone wall.
No. Look, we didn't locate any stone wall back there.
Okay. Questions from the board? Questions from the public? Anybody here for the subdivision?
Nobody back there, I guess.
And nobody online? Yeah, I guess you're monitoring who's online, right? Okay. So if there are no further questions, then I'm going to close the public hearing. Objections to that? Then the public hearing is closed. So again, it's a pretty straightforward subdivision here. They've given us everything that we need by the looks of it. So, motion to approve would be in order.
So moved.
Motion by Michael York to approve the subdivision. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Steve Malone. Is there any further discussion? Now, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay. Thank you. Let's see, they're starting way better yet.
Two properties of this farm. So Jane will be sitting this one out if you want to move to this side, if it makes it easier for you to look at the plan.
Really watch it.
Okay.
Okay, this brings us up to discussions. And the first order of discussion is a preliminary conceptual consultation. This is a conservation subdivision presented by Judd Dexter. And this is just to generally look it over and conceptualize and see what's going on. And...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is my first venture into this kind of development. I would not be here if it wasn't for Sarah and Mike's help. It was absolutely, it was fantastic, tremendous process.
Well, thank you for saying that.
Yeah, this, the property is part of the Hills property. It's been in the family thirteen more years. Parents passed away a few years ago, and the original homestead, the little white cape, has been rented for a while. What happened is this past year, the tenant decided that he wanted to purchase the property, which he approached my brother-in-law, Dave Hills, and said he'd like to buy the place, but it was on the condition, he was trying to go for something, he tried to offset some of the cost of buying the property. And basically, from what we have here, she's going to line up a bunch of houses in the field. And neither Jane's sister, my wife, and I absolutely did not think that was a good idea. His family has tried to preserve the look of that property for a few hundred years. The fields are there in butt seal forms, and we want to try to do whatever we can do to do that. So we ended up taking on this concept and the town's help to divide the property into steps of lots. The lots, again, I had no idea about this conservation process at all, until I worked in your office, that the houses, that the fields will all be preserved as they are. The little white cape obviously is still staying there, but the other houses, lots are large enough that the houses would be set back in the woods so that we wouldn't see the houses. The property, we're basically bordered on all sides of property by either Hill Forest or Hills family. Still, there's sure to be a problem there. I did go to partners that I wanted to try to get this perimeter, and the efforts, and the next step was to get a formal survey to present to you. Number one, they can't find a survey. You know, stop finding a survey.
Just missed one.
Oh, Jesus Christ. Stop! And when I did find one, the old Manvers, and just to look, they're charged 30,000 bucks. And I said, do we have some idea whether or not this can go forward? I don't think you want to make that kind of commitment. So I did contact soil engineers, a couple of septic people to find out about what goes on there. Each house, we just put in a well this past summer at the little white house. And it turns out, it's all sand. They hit, I think they went down 80 feet before they actually get the case. And I think the well can be something like 40 gallons of air.
And that's the house that's already on the property, right?
That's the house on the property. And that, again, that has an existing septic system on the backside of it. So there's no, and when I talked to soil engineers, he said all of this, all of this right here is all been tested in the past. And there's no reason to think they would have any problem. Flip test, oil, water. Again, my brother, my brother-in-law's packet that says, "I had aerial photograph." And then the house, yes, and the house is right across the road, that's a big tree.
Pointed out for us, maybe?
Looking at, or inside of it. This subdivision, this is sores crossing the road. This is Ash Hill Road. That's my brother-in-law's house. The white house is that one, and that's mine. And this is, I'm not sure how, you got the photograph and how we got the lines there, but I'm not quite sure that's quite to scale, but I don't know.
It's close.
Okay. There, it's, the area we're talking about has a grade in, going back 200 feet, it has a rise of about 20 feet, it's worth, there is water shit that comes down off, down this side, but it divides left and right of the property. One side, as you're facing the property, one side goes to the left, comes down right next to the road, Ash Hill Road, and then goes through a culvert and feeds into James Pond. But that's seasonal. May through October is raw. There are some instances there. And that's why we included them in its part of the protected area. There's no reason, the, is the conservation talk. That's, we potentially included that as part of the protection area, just so there'd be no, no one would ever try to experience on that. And then on the other side, actually, I mean, just past the left property line, there's a culvert on the road. And there's water that comes down off the hill, but it comes straight down off the hill. It doesn't cross, it doesn't cross into the area that we're talking about.
So is it this way?
Yeah, this way over there. It just comes straight down. There's, there's a little bit of a soil that comes from behind the white house that heads towards that. It's actually in the backside. It's in the woods. But in the 40 years I've been here, I've never seen the water. So it's, I think it's something that was around 200 years ago, but something changed, global warming. But so that's, that's kind of the concept we're looking at for septic. We look at two different plans. One was for individual septic systems on each house. The other was to have a, a community septic system that would support the five houses that are kind of on the culvert stack. And I don't know, I have no idea. It depends there, depending on the economics and the design and all that, which, which makes more sense, if I can say.
Probably more the economics of it, the septic systems. Individual as opposed to the, the common one. Were you, just get back to the land there. Were you saying that there are slopes in the back of the property? Is it a slope or a steep slope back here?
Yes.
And you don't know how steep those are, you know, because it depends on how many lots you can put in there, you know, with the...
It doesn't start going up probably 250 feet back in the woods, which is well beyond where...
Beyond where these are, you mean?
Yeah.
But you know, if...
And even there.
So anything greater than a 25% steep slope, you cannot use to calculate how many houses you can put on there. You know, nothing like that? Okay, that'd be, that'd be 100 feet out and 25 feet down. That's a 25% slope. It's not that steep back there. But you'll find out when you survey. I'm just, we're just going over there just to let you know that, you know, if it does, if it is steep like that, then it may take some of the lots that you can develop.
I mean, that's what it does. That's what it does.
All right.
I don't know that too.
Do you, do you know how, this has been, this land has been in the family for a long time, right?
Twenty years.
So it must have been a field at some point, right? Or was it used agriculturally? Do you know anything about that?
I understand it. Any place that has a stone wall, there was a field. And there's a stone wall throughout through there.
Yeah. So that probably would speak to, probably wasn't super steep necessarily.
Oh, if it was used, yeah, probably not. Yeah.
Depending on what they were doing on it.
And it is bordered by stone wall around a lot of the property. The property was surveyed by Yale, I think in the 30s. If not, because it's got, I think then they did it maybe in the 70s because that they put in all the white blazes then about 20 years ago. And I did talk to Yale Forest directly, and everybody, everybody's kind of accepted, the only neighbor you'll have on this is Darpen. And he kind of accepted that that's where the white blazes are, it's way better. You go to the deeds, you know, they're deep enough years ago. You follow the broken stump and go off, you find a tree with a black rock. And so he just kind of accepted that. I asked Yale if they would accept their survey that were done where the blazes are, it's the property line. And we have nothing that's going to be anywhere close to the property line anyways. And to establish that for the survey. And they said, well, Connecticut, they bite over land down to the last inch. And I said, we're mutually agreeing. Okay, we, that's happened. And they, the guy said, I would think it's certainly reasonable to ask. I'm not, I'm not the chief, I can answer that question. But you know, it's not, nobody's contested. I'm not sure why.
So just looking this over. Go ahead.
This area here, I drove up by there the other day. And it appears that at some time during the spring or whatever, that it gets rather damp in there because there's a lot of fern, ferns growing and stuff like that in here. That's the unit, the unit...
What you're talking about right here.
Yeah, the yellow part does, it's not, it swells enough, but it doesn't happen.
But it appears like it went back a ways this way too. But it appears like it went back a ways this way, too. So I don't.
Um, again, until I have somebody out there.
Yeah, you got a survey, delay it, what?
So, on your layout, you know, it looks like you've got a fifty-foot strip here and here. What are, what are these and what is that, right? That small little piece of land right there?
That's where, that potentially would be where the community septic.
I thought it might be right there.
The, the, the yellow on your left side, that is part of the main field.
Here.
Yeah.
So, it, per the ordinance, it looks like you have to have a hundred feet instead of fifty feet as a buffer there, in front of there, because the, on the ordinance on item six, it says, um, let's see. A minimum hundred-foot buffer shall be maintained between individual lot property lines and all external road rights of way, not part of the CRS. And that would be the road right of way right there.
Yeah.
And the lot line, you've got to have a hundred feet between the lot line and the, wherever the right of way that road is, which.
I missed that.
And to put it somewhere back in there?
Yes.
And also the same way here, you have to have a hundred feet of, um, buffer area from the lot line to any piece of land that isn't part of the subdivision here, or not subdivision, in your CRS. So that would mean you'd have to have a hundred-foot buffer, you know, your property line would have to be back there, a hundred feet from there, and it'd have to be back there, a hundred feet from there. All right, let me just read that again, make sure I'm correct in it here. Okay, a minimum hundred-foot buffer shall be maintained between individual lot property lines and adjacent property, not part of the CRS. So those adjacent properties would be Yale property.
Right.
So you'd have to have, the lot line would have to be a hundred feet back from there, lot line would have to be a hundred feet back from there, lot line would have to be a hundred feet back from the road here, and these as well. The way I read it, it'd have to be a hundred feet back from those as well for that.
Well, the existing house can't be moved.
I know, but I'm just going over what we're reading, it's conceptual, you know?
Right.
I'm just making you aware of all these things that, that we're looking at. And there'd have to be a hundred feet, let's see, between that and that line there somewhere, according to the regulations. Now, you can ask for waivers, I think ZBA and that type of stuff. Also, you show a hundred and seventy-five feet frontage on this little feeder road right here on both of these lots, and the maximum is a hundred feet frontage on the road, according to.
Well, I thought you have minimum of a hundred.
Uh, no, it's a maximum, I think it's a minimum of, let me see, it's a minimum frontage, hundred feet, maximum road frontage, a hundred fifty feet, sorry, yeah. Minimum's a hundred feet, maximum a hundred and fifty, and that's a hundred and seventy-five there.
Well, again, easily changed.
Yeah, easily changed, just making you aware of that, you know, we aren't, it's in a sightline review, we're discussing this, so you don't spend a bunch of money and have us say, hey, wait a minute, don't do that. So.
I know a lot about eyeballs, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not an engineer on this stuff.
No, no, and you don't have to be, no, we're just going over this. And again, one seventy-five as opposed to the one fifty there. And I don't know what the distance on this cul-de-sac is there, you know, the frontage on there, whether it's got the minimum frontage on there or not, a hundred feet or not.
And I, and the whole, that whole piece can be moved further up, is, and, and add to the buffer down closer to the road, because it's, it's on the state of conservation anyway.
Yep.
So I, I have no objection to moving things around.
Let's see, I just had some notes, I went over your, your drawing here, so I'm just going over my notes, make sure I'm conveying them to you. Let's see, and, and these lots here also exceed a hundred and fifty-foot frontage, let's see, right there. I know one, an existing house on there, but if it's going under this ordinance, unless you have a variance from it, they have to be a hundred fifty or less, or between a hundred and a hundred fifty, those two lots there.
Will the existing house there be grandfathered?
Well, that's on the entire lot, correct? The existing house is not a lot of its own.
Correct.
Correct, so it's on the, it's, so that's not really grandfathered, because it's the entire lot, you're subdividing that off of it.
Right.
Now, again, the house is there, and, and, you know, you take a hundred feet from the road to that house, it's probably going to run into that house, you know, I'm talking about that front set back here. Hundred feet into there, so possibly a variance might be in order for something like that.
And I absolutely agree, again, this is where I need professional guides to make this all work, but, um, hopefully, you know, variance can be granted, I don't think, again, the abutter being Yale Forest and us.
Oh, it makes perfect sense to have it, you know, to do what you're doing makes perfect sense with Yale Forest surrounding and all, but just making it conform to what the ordinance reads is what we're doing here, or in here. But, yeah, possible variance would solve that problem there on that house lot there. Let's see. And, yeah, again, I think that was about it, it was the, just the buffers we were talking about, with the a hundred-foot minimum, again, buffer from the, the road, and that'd have to be up in there somewhere, according to that, and it'd have to be a hundred feet there, have to have a hundred feet there and there from any property that is not part of.
Yeah, I misunderstood that.
No, no.
Easy to change.
That's what we're doing here, yep.
Okay.
So, rest of the board members are.
Are you going to market to workforce, or is it going to be market backed?
It's, again, we're going to be probably a three-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom home. It's, it's a very nice section of town, it's.
Well, I know exactly where it is.
Right.
I've lived in Swansea all my life, so I know where.
It's, you know, that, we will, when we, if we, when this goes forward, we will part of the sales of the lots, and me, the design would be, approval would be based on.
Well, you can do either one, we just, we just probably like to know if you want to do a market house, or do you want to do a workforce housing, because there's a difference.
In all, in all honesty, I don't know the difference. I don't know what workforce housing is by definition.
It's very difficult to build those kind of homes of workforce, what they consider workforce in the state of New Hampshire.
It's hard to?
It's very difficult.
Even one.
Because developers, developers want, you know, whoever does the building is going to want a profit. And, yeah, because then you're talking two seventy, two eighty thousand for what any developer would actually build these things.
Yeah.
So they can make some money on it themselves.
Right. No, I understand that.
And that's way above, in that, my, in my opinion, that's way above workforce housing in this area.
I would think so, too. And, no, I'm.
But it's, it's your choice, I mean, you can do either one.
In all, I haven't got that far to get, but I was, I know one of the pitfalls in workforce housing, so, and it sounds like potentially a pretty good fit.
Something you probably should look into when you're doing, developing your plans.
Oh, yeah, this is really, and, and, and in all honesty, we're, we're not anticipating this to happen very fast. We, you know.
It's come, might be difficult if you nail down a survey that wants to do it right now.
Oh, right now, well, I found last year, around six months.
They have the underkeep.
Just, just get them here.
Reserve.
Yep.
Primary, secondary.
Um, they, when I do the survey, they have to show the primary and secondary.
Survey.
I don't get one of that, but, yeah, it has to be.
You have to enjoy an apprenticeship for six years.
Yes.
No. There's also, also about the roads, you know, there's, it says that all the housing lots on, or housing lots on this.
Yep.
Property have to be accessed by one road, and it'll be essentially existing driveway and another road, or driveway for that one right there, which doesn't quite meet those regulations. Uh, meaning, this house, I, I would think that you'd get a variance for that, because that house already has a driveway on it, you know?
The other ones, you know, it's in the middle of the driveway here.
Yeah.
It'd be the middle of a field.
And putting those lots side by side, you might be get a variance from that, but that's just something to be aware of, that it's against what the regulations spell out and all.
And I, is I understand it, when you put in the road, it takes it out of the uncertainty?
Uh, the road itself?
Yeah.
Yeah, this road here would not be in the.
It seems to me it would work against what we're trying to do, putting a lot, a lot more road.
Well, it, it probably does, but the way they're written, all the lots have to be off of one road, it doesn't have to be that road, it has to be a road, one road feeding all the interior lots on there. But again, you've got that lot there, which is existing.
Right.
Which might be good, you know, fodder for a variance.
Okay.
And you can play with it around to see about that lot there, to see how far out you have to come here with that hundred-foot buffer back there, push this back that way.
Okay.
And these, it'd be pushed over this way, because of the hundred-foot buffer between Yale Forest and that property, so it'd probably push it that way there.
Well, and look, part of the choice of putting the, the cul-de-sac where it is, is the existing barway, the stone wall right there.
Oh, is there?
It's two hundred feet from that corner. So it, it gives you a better sightline.
Well, again, you know, variances, they're for the one side, they don't for the all type of thing.
Okay.
Yep.
On the ball of the, uh, proposed rule, is there sufficient street frontage?
Uh, we don't know yet, we, we went over that to see if there's enough, there's between a hundred and a hundred fifty feet. The minimum is a hundred and a hundred fifty is the maximum, so we don't know yet, but they'll, they'll have to end up with their.
I, I tried to get them some at least a hundred.
On, on the.
On each of the buttons, on each of those.
So, basically.
And it's because of the shape of those, it's easier to make it bigger, and make the cul-de-sac a little longer, and it just pushes it, just pushes everything back.
Yeah.
Could I ask a question? You said there's an existing bar at the corner, I'm assuming it's the Ash Hills crossing?
Yes.
Okay, so the, the proposed driveway is two hundred feet back from that?
It's approximately two hundred feet from that.
Okay, it's just, it was hard to tell on that, and I was just gonna make sure you knew, it has to be at least a hundred and twenty-five feet back from an intersection.
Yes, I did pick up on that.
Yep.
Yes, I did pick up on that, so, and I'm not sure if the bar was exactly a hundred and twenty-five, or a hundred and, there's been a cut in the stone wall here for ever.
Yeah, a good place to put it, right? That's one of the things you're trying to preserve, right? All the stone walls in there.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's legal in New Hampshire to disturb a stone wall.
Probably isn't.
Well, I'm getting a variance on that.
Yeah. So, let's see, any other comments from the board on, on what he might want to pursue before it gets too far into it?
Well, in details, it's, we just covered what he.
Well, yeah, it's not supposed to be detailed anyway, it's supposed to be conceptual, which we're laying, you know, property lines and those types of things, distances and things. Um, any other suggestions? Anybody from the public on this? This isn't a hearing, but you, you can speak up if you want, you know, say something, anything about it. Nobody on that one.
I have a question, I guess.
Sure.
I've not been in our, I'm sorry, I was sharing down on conservation. I'm not banking on the development of a, um, CRS, you call it, right, conservation.
Yeah, or C.
Yeah, CRS, Conservation Residential Subdivision.
Residential subdivision, okay, I was, I was kind of looking over the announcement packet, and so I hadn't been part of the process before, and I'm just curious, does it, I know, um, well, so it does go to the Conservation Commission, correct, before it gets approved?
Uh, let's see, probably not. Um, it's, well, you usually are a prize of everything, so, yeah, it would be, wouldn't it be sent to those guys?
Yes, all of the.
Yeah.
Pending applications.
Any application.
For review.
So officially, when it comes to reports, because this is not official right now.
Yes, right, I haven't done that stage yet. Who, so then who's responsible for developing and can you do an easement on it? Who takes care of that? And is it, does it become the responsibility of the Conservation Commission then to monitor that going forward?
I suppose it can be if the Conservation Commission wants to do that. It, it all depends how it's written up as far as, you know, how it's going to be conserved. And it's, it's supposed to be conserved for public use type, you know, hiking and those types of things, hunting probably too, and that type of stuff, but.
There's, there's, um, on page nine of the final adopted version of the const, of the regulations, it says, um, item number seven, conservation land or any portion of it shall be held, managed, and maintained by the developer until at least fifty-one percent of the lots or dwellings have been sold. At, at that time, the conservation land shall be owned in one or more of the following ways, in common by homeowners association. Two is by a land trust or other suitable private nonprofit organization registered to the state of New Hampshire, um, that will ensure that the conservation land shall be held in perpetuity as conservation land. And three is by the town of Swansea, which may accept the conveyance of any conservation land for perpetual public use and maintenance, if accepted pursuant to RSA six hundred and four forty-one, and only if public access is guaranteed. So they have three options.
What sort of a default?
Um, well, historically, the town of Swansea has not been super anxious to accept these kinds of parcels, so, um.
And, and, I was talking to my brother-in-law earlier, and there was one of the questions that I wanted to bring up, was what happens to then it goes to conservation, and was still going to stay in the Hills Family Trust, and they, they would manage the land.
Yeah, well, I think that would be option A. So by a land trust, again, I don't think a land trust would be interested in assuming responsibility for land that's so closely, it's fairly small parcel, and it's so closely associated with residences. So probably the option would be the homeowners association, which would be something that you would design, you know, and present as part of.
But you wouldn't be part of it. You're talking about your family's sort of looking it over or watching over it, because if it's homeowners association, unless you live there, you would not be part of the homeowners association. You know?
Yeah, it gets tricky, because part of your motivation is you, I know you want to protect this land, and yet you're handing it off to the people who live in these houses and.
It's probably a good question to get a hold of a lawyer to answer that question, which your best option is, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, that's part of it, is that, obviously, my brother-in-law and my wife both really want to have their name, it's kind of a good scare out of family. So, we'll need to get an answer to that.
You could consult with, you could have your attorney check out some of the, you know, land trust kinds of entities, but I think that would be, I think most would be reluctant, just rule of thumb.
Well, I, I, I have a fairly good connection with the Harris Center, and, uh, probably Silver Lake, you have Silver Lake Land Trust in there.
Yeah, you can talk to them, talk to them and find out what they think.
Yeah, it might be a good idea.
Because I, I think that would meet your goals.
Yeah.
Probably better than anything.
Okay. Can I just ask though, is it sort of a default then that the property, saying nobody does anything, to sort of follow up on these options? Do they have to follow up on these options? I mean, what, what, how am I trying to say this? So is it automatic when this is developed, that this property is sort of held in common or in, in common, I guess, in perpetuity by the landlords, by the property owners, the subdivision owners?
It, it's per ordinance, you know, we're talking about the ordinance, per ordinance, and like Victoria just said, after fifty-one percent, I think it's fifty-one percent of the lots or dwellings have been sold, then they can do one of the three options there, otherwise.
Then they can, or then they have.
Well, they have to, yeah.
So, if they do, if they don't really do anything, does it sort of automatically then become like a cooperatively owned?
No, one, one of those options has to be done at some point, you know, it may, um, if, if someone's not paying attention, it may go beyond the fifty-one percent, I suppose, it could.
That's what I'm wondering, if someone's not paying attention, then what happens? Is it a limo, is it?
I, I guess you could.
The landlords, we go, let's all get together and sell this as another lot?
No, no, you can't, no. It, they'd have to be in here first anyways for it, but, no, if the one underneath that subdivision, then that's where it's going to be, that's, it's going to stay right there. And their, and that land that was laid out, whatever it's going to be that was laid out for the conservation will be conservation land, just, it'll, the formality as to how it's going to be managed, is what we're talking about.
So if it's conservation land, is it required that it's publicly accessible?
Um, it depends on who takes it over. If the town takes it over, it's a requirement. I don't know about a land trust, what the, what their parameters of it would be.
And what of the homeowners association?
Uh, whatever is written into their rules, yeah, I don't know.
And how that we, I'm just thinking about when we've done like condominiums that have land associated with them, don't we request that those homeowner, the homeowners association papers be part of the.
Yep.
The approval, so if, if option A is selected here, that would be something to So if, if option A is selected here, that would be something to be aware of, that, um, if, if you chose to do that. That, that you'd have to develop those.
We actually have a formal survey coming in to get a pool to do this, nothing changes.
Yeah, it's way down the road.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
I think to help solve the, the question is you write into your transfer or deed what you want done with that particular property. And as we put in a deed restriction on a project up by the airport, do that and that will help cover.
So that as each parcel sells, it's just part of that purchase and sale.
Right, but that has to be set aside, is reserved and cannot be changed.
Right.
Okay, any other questions for us? Anything you can think of?
No, I think that's in more.
Yeah, you do, and, and plus you always write, as you have come in to talk to Sarah and she'll have probably all the answers that you need. You know, you run into something that we didn't cover here.
Uh, one request I have, so don't get sick in there, man.
She's not allowed to watch so many sick days a year.
So just a thought, because you do know this land and one of the things that is, is talked about in these regulations are conservation values, you know, the cool features of the land. That would be, that's something that you are kind of exclusively able to document because you know the land, right? So you might just, when you're taking your walks this spring, you know, if you see, like, you know, if, if you note things that seem special.
There are all kinds of animals up there, you know, I had a bear, like, in my dumpster the other day.
Yeah.
And there are trails, but not, they're further up into Hill Four, they're not there. And as far as, I think there was things like animal trails and all that, they can go wherever they want.
But there, there might be some things related to its former agricultural use that, you know, in addition to the stone walls.
On the, on the other side of the river with the ball and the, and the ash areas, that went through an extension, extensive area. Forty years ago.
Let's see, the, the town attorney usually, if we see it first or not.
So that's another way of respecting the use of that land.
Well, when you start working with your engineer.
Best option is go to the attorney.
They'll have great ideas about configuring lots and stuff like that and, and when they do the soil work, you know, that, that will reveal some information about the parcel too.
And do you have a copy of our, the regulations or did Sarah give you a copy of those? She has a copy and, and this might be helpful too. I'll just give you my copy of it here, which is, it just lays out some of the things that your surveyor might want to just be looking for when they're surveying it to put on the plat, those types of things.
Yeah, I did notice that.
Okay.
I think I found her again, but it's black. It's pretty boring. Diversity increase the same diversity as anybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, kind of fine again.
Just have the surveyor noted on the plat when they survey it?
Well, as far as views, we don't want, we don't want the houses to be suited, we want them back in the works, so it doesn't spoil the aesthetic look of the land, it's like.
It gives, it gives the owner some more privacy too.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
You don't hear the traffic on that street.
So, you know.
It was quiet this afternoon because you can bust across the road, it's a bird down, so.
So, get you in touch with the surveyor and talk it over. I don't know if the zoning board adjustment has a preliminary review type like we do there, but you, if they did, you could go and ask them about possible variances before you get too far into it as well.
No, we serve, got it, so I'll do that.
They don't have a preliminary review, but you can apply for a whole ton of variances before you.
Yeah, before you go too far into.
That's what I can, that was a don't.
Well, that's where I started.
Okay.
Thanks for coming here.
Any other questions?
Anybody? I guess not.
I'll wait till later. I'm not saying anything.
I need that to finish.
Thank you. You too, thank you. Okay, brings us to item B and that would be another preliminary conceptual consultation and that's FW website plan review. So we're here to take a look at, uh, what you might be proposing over there informally and just to see how it might be laid out and answer any questions that you guys might have for us.
So I'm Jamie Anderson with Greenleaf Construction. I represent FW Web, we're the general contractor, design, build, general contractor. And here's Matt Ruth here from TF Moran. And we are looking at the property located at, I believe it's three seventy-one, old firm said. The former runway and. Fun Park, yes. Mainland FW Web is a plumbing and HVAC wholesaler, so they deal directly to the trades. And they are located right now currently in Keene and they've been busting at the seams up there, so they've been looking for an alternate location to expand their capacity because they have about a hundred locations now in the northeast, so they're growing market share and, uh, like we said, they've been looking for a while. We've actually tried another location in Safford Drive. We ran into some issues there with the site and now they're looking at the five acre lot that's runway fun park and then also another adjacent two acre parcel that they have under agreement. So we're here to review our concept and get in kind of feedback that we may be helpful as we hopefully proceed on with the, the civil permitting portion here.
Great, thank you.
Is it either or? You said you're looking.
We'll be trying to obtain two acres of this lot.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Yeah, so this, this five acre parcel goes from here to this line.
Okay.
And this is the other two acres that they have under agreement. So the other component, uh, they also, they sell to the contractors, uh, the other component of the building is a twenty-five thousand square foot warehouse in the back. Roughly eleven thousand square foot self-serve, so that's, um, I sometimes call it a contractor, like plumbing contracted grocery store because it's set up that way. It's got the aisles like a similar to a grocery store. We'll have all the smaller parts in there and the warehouse, of course, stores some of the bigger stuff and also the overstock. And, uh, there's about a thirty, four hundred square foot office part of it and then forty-one hundred square foot showroom. So that would be, uh, new to the area. They don't have that currently at their, their key location. And that's more of display retail, we call it, where a contractor would make a recommendation to a homeowner. Say, why don't you go down and pick out your, your potential, uh, new faucet or new bathtub of a sort. So what we typically do there, there's a lot of, um, I guess we'll call it mock setups, uh, with all the different fixtures displayed. Some of them will be working, most of them not. But homeowners can go in and kind of, uh, touch and feel everything, I guess. And that's, that's a much smaller component of their business, but generally it goes to the contractors. The other thing, Matt, to talk about was the outside storage yard.
Yeah, so with this concept, what the intent would be is to have a fenced in area that encompasses the backside of the building. Uh, the main storage area outside would be in this particular area, it's roughly one point two acres. The intent would be, again, to have that fenced in and, and access through, uh, control gates. And we would propose some kind of vegetated screen along there to, to block that. What we would be looking for and have to pursue is some special exceptions for, um, the wholesale use and the outside storage, which is not allowed. So we would be pursuing that zoning before coming to you close.
So is that like big racks of pipes would be stored? What's out there?
Uh, generally there would be bundles of pipe that could stay outside. It wouldn't be any kind of copper or anything like that.
PVC.
Some PVC, cast iron, um, uh, other soil pipe type things that would go underground. HVAC equipment that eventually would come outside.
And deliveries, do you have, I see you have two driveways there. Is one of them for deliveries or, or not? You have one leading into your main parking lot by the office there, by the looks.
Yeah, that would be more for the, for the contractors coming in. The self-serve entrance is here, this hatched out area, so that would have a sliding door. The office entrance would be here, the showroom entrance would be here, so we'd kind of keep the, the truck traffic, the bigger truck traffic here to the back. So they have five loading docks, I think four to day one, one would be a future loading dock. So the truck maneuver would pull in back into the docks and then exit that same, you know, same road. So we try to limit the truck traffic to this curb cut and then more of the contractors, homeowners and employees would be using that center curb cut there.
Would you be doing delivery with the, the bulk storage area? Would you be?
Yep, Web does a lot.
Scrapping that out?
Yep, Web does a lot of, um, deliveries to job sites, for example. That'd be look more like a, I guess we call it a twenty-four foot raft body or a box truck.
So you wouldn't have contractors coming in and using that same access to get into the, the yard for the place?
It's possible. Um, the other part, we do have a small section up here, what's, they're going to call the roll call. So if there's something that's larger that would have to come from the warehouse, they could get loaded here in the back. So you would, wouldn't, there'd be an upgrade door here, another upgrade door here in the warehouse. So hypothetically, a truck come over here, get loaded and go back out.
Would the trailer on the truck be, is it going to be rolling or exterior?
Uh, trailer would always stay exterior, have loading docks and bumpers and, um, dock level, so.
What is your vertical incline from thirty-two or decline from thirty-two into the parking area? But that's not there, that's all slow.
We're working that out right now. That was one thing we have some concerns on right now. We're trying to figure out what.
Looks to be a little over ten percent, very grade change.
Because if you're pulling a, a truck trailer out of there, that's going to be kind of a tricky little maneuver to get up onto thirty-two.
Yeah, we're, we're anticipating we're going to have to massage this a little bit to get, get some length in there, uh, just flatten it out a bit. So again, this is, you know, this is kind of a general idea that maybe some changes as far as access, obviously with DOT, working that out. So like distance around the corner and whatnot, um, and making sure we have the platforms that meet.
Yeah, it's a tough corner there, especially on that side of the road there. They're coming from the airport area, Keene area and down around that corner. And like Richard was saying, pulling out there, but again, yeah, if the DOT approves it, then they approve it.
Because on that corner, it's actually an incline, you hit the flat and then, you know, again, it's pretty flat to the end of the building. But coming up out of there would be my concern. And the sight line from that driveway eastward, are you putting vegetation in there or is that going to be open?
Well, this would be open far enough for the, uh, you know, the four hundred plus feet around that side, so there wouldn't be any blocking that, that side.
I'm talking coming east on thirty-two.
On that side?
No, east, that's west.
Yeah, I mean, this would be, again, the four hundred feet, this is a sixty scale plan, so, you know, we're out somewhere in here, so it's pretty much, that's why that's held a straight shot pretty much across that would have to be maintained for sight distance later. Which brings us, you know, roughly somewhere to that intersection, which is important.
And the center line for light path is where?
Uh, it's running down approximately here. Uh, we do have to deal with elevations and heavy permits for that as well. Which we're working out elevations in the building currently and what we have to do with that.
Plan to bring any fill or anything in there for any low areas or just level it out or what are you going to?
I mean, it's pretty flat as it is, so I think we're hoping to maintain that as much as we can. Probably sheet floor, a lot of, you know, the runoff to, to above ground stormwater in either direction. Obviously we'll be, uh, putting in septic, um, for the, for the office space, which has all the bathrooms. You know, we're anticipating these parking areas here would have a little bit deeper of a parking space and aisle just due to the fact that the, the bigger vans that, uh, contractors drive. So we'd probably be at ten by twenty on those versus the standard size, but that would only encompass, you know, that area in there and the back of the contractor.
Speaking about parking or parking, um, did you figure out what the parking was or did they figure it out, you know, as far as parking requirements? Because they've got a showroom there, but are we going to consider that retail? Because if the customers are coming in there, looking at the showroom, we're going to buy this or that or whatever for parking wise, you know, as far as.
Well, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm under the impression that there are no retail sales there and so the showroom is just so that customers can experience the fixtures and then, or not customers, but the public can come in and play around with the fixtures and then bring back their decisions to their contractor?
Uh, they do, they do card sales or they would sell to the homeowner in that case.
I was going to say, I've gone to the present one and bought stuff in my house before.
Yeah, same here, yeah, and, and you've got the other, um, I don't know, market type aisles you mentioned, that the contractors come in and grab their own stuff.
Yep.
And that'd almost be retail sales as well. We're just starting, discussing parking requirements because they're different for warehousing and retail and that type of stuff, so. I mean, no surprises on what you'd be required for parking. So, we'd need to know, yeah, the basic, the square footage of what's going to be, um, I guess the aisle.
Yeah, retail versus the warehousing.
Yeah, I mean, one other thing is, you know, we, there's going to be a mezzanine with more storage, so that would be added to the warehouse. So we'll have to, if, if that's the case, as far as the, the self-serve and the showroom being retail, we'll have to recount that and obviously adjust accordingly. But I think we have ample room to get those spaces in that.
Yeah.
Other than the, I call it customer parking in the rear of the building. Where you said you're going to have the trucks, uh.
Well, yeah, this, this is again, because they're going to be going into a self-serve to pick their stuff.
Where is, is there any other additional parking that we have to mark?
Not at this point in time, no, you know, depending on how we, we adjust this and, and what our calculations come out to, you know, we're probably looking at anywhere from eight to ten more spaces of that.
Are you thinking employees?
Employee parking, customer parking.
Well, the parking will be, you know, decided as to. But as to what it's used for, you know, that's why we're discussing parking now, is the board in agreement that the showroom part and the self-serve, served part would be considered retail?
Yes, yes.
If that's the case, then when you do your square footage for that, consider that retail.
Yep.
And the parking spaces required for that would be, so, and then the warehousing will be for, of course, the one thing and the office will be for the other thing. So, I think that, that'll let you know what to plan on.
Yeah, typically just for our planning purposes, when we do, I, I know the bylaws are, are different, but we, you know, we, we, in this size, we call this a twig. It, uh, you know, if they had fifteen customers at a time, they would be very busy. And you typically see early morning, there'd be the, the run where all the contractors are trying to get to their job site, so they're stopping in first and then there'd probably be another rush towards the end of the day, you know, two thirty, three o'clock or so. So in this case, and then the showroom, um, day one, they're planning on only having two showroom associates there, so there'll be two salespeople there to start. And they'd like to grow into potentially four as they got busier. So if they had three people or, or three groups of people come through, they'd be pretty busy. So we understand that the retail does require that per, for the law.
Which is, just going for, for basics, you know, spaces required per use. So, you know, if you get calculating, calculating it out and you figure that, well, you know, this is, you know, like you're just talking about, you're only going to be three people in here a day or however it is, you can come back and talk to us about it.
Yes.
And we can decide, but for now, I think you should just decide on, lay, when you lay it out, lay it out for parking spaces required for retail. If it's too much or something's wrong, then you can back to the board.
Yeah, well, it does get into, sorry, long story short, is head virtually when we were doing projects for FW Web, we ended up going for a banner. head virtually, when we're doing projects for FW Web, we end up going for variances based on so the buildings usually are a little bit larger, so just by the nature of the size of the building, it warrants more parking, but that, they're not always necessary, so, but we'll plan on showing it and talk it through as it gets through.
And just, you know, when you do your layout there, just I guess lay it out for maximum, you know, you might get a variance that you wouldn't have to put that many in, but just so you can fit it on there, plan on that, that you'd have to have them on there.
Are there any employees that you anticipate at that location?
So, my programming sheet here, working with the manager, they're going to have, the goal is to start with 16 employees. And I guess their five-to-10-year plan would be an additional 11, so it would be 27 employees. That would include managers, inside salespeople who would be working with the contractors, people who would be working the counter, warehouse employees, warehouse drivers. Yeah, so, I think they'd be starting at 16.
I'm wondering if a traffic study might be advantageous for us? Because it is going to drive more vehicle traffic to the site. And heavier, heavier traffic too. Right.
Well, we could see what the state weighs in on it, since it's their road, you know. Yeah, but
Well, that's where the state on the answer is.
A good place to start there is with the state as to whether they require a traffic study for that.
Yeah, I mean, our standard, standard practice is to submit a traffic memo with the driveway permit. Tell us then what they want to study.
With your projected movements.
Yeah.
At your projected, yeah. And you can back that up with other buildings, I guess, other locations that you have there as to.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be compared against the use of the same report, and I'm not sure how busy, you know, the park was previously at its peak.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, I don't think you can go by that, can't go by that too much there.
It's got a lot of light poles, it must have been open late, right?
I would think that there are a lot of entrances and entrances on that on that stretch of land from Caltona, I mean.
Well, they're there, but they aren't adding any more there. Right? One more to the left there, right, because they, is that the original one?
Right on the corner. That's not a very big stretch from the corner.
Well, the state will weigh into that, because like they have down on Route 10. Yes, they will, because they have, they have stopped a couple of projects on Route 10 where they won't allow to put more like the apartment buildings. That's why they couldn't go on Route 10, because the state would not allow them.
Yeah, you're only allowed some of the curb cuts per frontage, so they stick pretty hard to it based on these old deeds and whatnot.
And do, do you think, you'll have to check with our fire department, I guess, as to, or code enforcement, as to whether they would require you to sprinkle that building, it looks like a pretty large.
Our intent is to sprinkle regardless, well, by code, I think we're going to have to, so we were going to design a system with a
That was my next question, yeah, okay, so that should be on the site.
We're aware of that, yep. Just back to the curb cuts, so in front of the existing building there, there's an extra, like kind of an oversized curb cut directly across from the gas station. So it'd be discontinuing that, and we'd move the, the first one would be a little bit further down.
Taking, taking down a building is there already?
Yes, yep.
And getting rid of the go-kart and the
Yeah, he's admiring the amount of tires that would have to go with it too. Oh, boy.
Yeah, so you could have a fitness program for the employees, so they would use the little golfers.
I do actually have one more handout for everybody, I emailed it Sarah after she put the packets together, I do have can walk around and distribute them there.
I'll have my some now.
So floor plans along with yeah, oh, sorry.
One more, big table.
I'm going to have to tell the wife I've got to have a bigger desk at home. That'll get a laugh.
Sarah, do you have one? You got one? I have extras. So this is kind of a zoom in of what we alluded to on the plan here. There's two blue areas. One would be the showroom, which would have the side entrance that would be 32. And then you drive around, the office entrance is the green section. And then the self-serve is where you see those small shelves that are lined up, doubled back, back-to-back with about five-foot aisles in between. And then the warehouse behind it is which serves the self-serve. So those racks are basically pallet racks. And there's loading docks off the back. And then in the back of the office in the self-serve, there's two stairs that would get you up to the second floor, which would be employee-only mezzanine for storage. And that would be just kind of bulk storage for bulkier items that don't fit in racks well. Sheet two is a color elevation of the most, the bottom of the page on the A11A shows a gray section, which would be the showroom entrance. The red part of the building would be web, web red. And then we have the docks off the back. And the contractor entrance has the FW Web Company logo above it.
And what's the material?
So we do pre-enchilade metal buildings, so it'd be standings, or it'd be a metal siding. And then there's a CNU at the loading docks to protect that or to be more durable. And then there's a masonry veneer, two different colors with a little stripe on it in front of the self-serve and office.
So it looks like the mezzanine is over part of the building and not all of it?
Yeah, it's not over the showroom in this situation, yes.
It's over that back area there, or it's over this, this area here?
It's over the front portion.
Oh, it's over that part, the blue part?
Yeah, it's over the biggest blue and the green, so the self-serve in the office.
That's where it is, okay, so you'll have traditional 30-foot or whatever pallet racking?
In the whole entire back section, up on the, up on the mezzanine, they do mostly something that would be called pallet jack. If they have a PVC tub or enclosure, something of that sort, that would get lifted up on a forklift into the two loading, or excuse me, one loading area here. A little hashed out gray area, and that would lift that up onto the mezzanine.
So the boiler room and the electrical room are going to be up in the mezzanine?
Yep, yep. We've been doing that a lot, often, especially new construction jobs where there space on the first floor is usually at a premium.
Anybody have any comments on, we see here, it's flat, it is flat.
Well, it's, it's a slanted one.
So thinking about our update of the site plan regs, we've been working on improving our landscaping regulations. And although you wouldn't legally be required to reference those, they're good, so I would appreciate it if you take a good, if we could get them a copy of, you know, a current draft of what we're looking about for landscaping. Could we do that?
They can come in and see them, I don't know, it's up to them, if they want to look at it, fine, we haven't adopted them yet, we probably will, but we haven't yet, so.
So, but anyway, I know that it's, it would be, in my opinion, it would be to your best interest. But, and I noticed that you don't have really any landscaping shown on this, because we're way early days. But just know that that's something that I, I for one would really like to see, you know, through. And the other thought is, my impression of this lot is that this area here is really wet. You know, I'm sure you'll be out there looking, but
There is a drainage channel that goes through there, and I think part of the intent would be to connect it up.
Yeah, it seems standing water, I mean, really wet.
You know, it's determined non-jurisdictional, so it's not weapons considered weapons. Carrying each swale, but it could be maintained, so I think probably what we'll end up doing is redirecting that
Yeah, so you will be having to dig around and move stuff around to make that happen, to change your elevation.
Yeah, it's somewhat of a hole. But yeah, that pipe runs out.
Yeah, it cuts, it cuts under here off right now.
So it just drains out and then runs freely.
Any things? It's, it's not a public hearing, but go ahead, voice your concerns.
Mark Square, just because you're under the flight path, lighting might be issue. The lighting associated with vehicles moving around, the way that the vendors, contractors, you know, cross getting on the lid, especially during winter hours and the weather.
I would imagine then their FAA permit, that'll be brought up and we'll be able to that, thanks.
Yeah, we're actually working with a consultant right now to extend the map, the mapping of the height restrictions past the runway. The map that we were received to stop short of this area, so we're we're working to figure out what our starting point, our slab elevation is compared relative to the height of the building to make sure.
Yep, so they extend the glide stall about play if they can see.
Exactly.
Make sure you aren't running into that.
Part of our big step is to get in there to find out what the materials are to work on our storm mark concept to go a little bit further to figure out where things need to be elevation-wise. Also, the curb cuts that you guys mentioned is important to make sure that grade is not too aggressive coming on or off.
Your lighting will be on the building?
Yep, we'll do wall packs on the building, but there'll also be pole lights around the parking areas and in the outside storage yard.
Pole shield?
Yep.
May I ask a question? So do you, you own this property now or you're just looking at?
FW Web has it under agreement, but they're, we're in the due diligence phase.
And then the two acres to the west, is that something that you're looking to purchase also or?
That's also under agreement right now, but it's, again, it's still a due diligence phase, it's not, they have
And you don't have a plan for that?
Yeah, the building actually kind of
They need it for the parking and for that part of the building now.
So this, this line right here is the two acres and this is the five. Yeah, no, no.
The fence that goes around the old storage rooms, like what kind of fence is it? But you also talked about that even around the fence, and then I think I heard somebody say that perhaps you can't do that.
Yeah, we, we'll typically install, our standard is an eight-foot-tall black vinyl coated fence. So all the components, you normally see a chain link fence, they're typically galvanized. We do the black vinyl coated.
But you can see through that fence.
Excuse me?
Chain link, you swat it?
We typically don't unless it's a
He's saying the standard is no privacy slides.
What happens is those get bent and broken and
Like
Yeah, the other, the other component here is we're actually we're sitting lower than the driveway.
Yep.
We're, we're planning to try to stay fairly similar to what's there. Understood that we need to massage the curb cuts and make sure those driveways aren't too steep coming in and off the property. But we don't want to bring it up too high, so there'll be a lot of filth coming in. And certainly we can't go down.
So part of the challenge is to be, you know, again, getting landscape up there without blocking site distance. But again, you're not going to block what's down in the hole, you know, when we first land it, so it's a challenge that, you know, it's going to have to be dealt with, but I don't think there's any exact solution, just because of the site distance, we need it cleared, so we can't stuff vegetation up against the right way.
Plus the fact you overhead wires and telephone poles.
You can do a lot here, you know, with the, from the, for drivers who approach from this direction.
Yeah, and part of our plan is to do a stormwater pond, so if we do that, we're going to fit a sheet, we'll, we'll obviously soften the edges that we try to do on everything. You know, to make it more aesthetically.
Yeah, it's going to be a prominent part of the landscape with that red, you know, red is a very arresting color.
How high, how far is it? Nobody guessed.
Inside the building is 30-foot clear, so the structure is roughly between the roof and the pitch, it's relative, they call it flat roof, but there is a pitch to it. So it's about 36 feet tall, if we're, if we're under the threshold of flight path.
Roof that big, they might land on it.
It's amazing to me that they, few years ago, quite a few years ago, they ripped everything out. Now there's anything to go back in and get.
So Sarah, does the, does the town require witnessing and test bids for septic systems? Or is it just still just pre-approval to them and then the state?
That would be a question for code enforcement, on larger projects, I'm not sure if generally they do require that. To my knowledge, I would say no, but you're going to want to talk to Mike Jazz now.
Okay.
I want to know, why did you choose the color red? In such a prominent position?
Well, if you look at, if you look at FW Web's logo, it's a red valve. So it's, it's their color.
Just like Home Depot was orange.
Their color.
In concrete, FW red is not red.
Well, it's probably because the city made them change it.
And Keene is not red.
If you notice, if you drive by the Nashville store, we just painted that red. The Nashville store right on Route 3, we just painted red.
It's red?
We renovated it recently.
Well, Nashville, Route 3 is all different, very true and squawdy.
That's true. So we broke it up a little here with the, with the gray at the showroom. And that's the, that's the elevation that you're going to see for the most part.
Well, let's see, is the color going to be a problem for the board? They need to know it, they need to know it now.
Doesn't bother me whatsoever, they could do a sky blue.
I understand that the company colors, I understand that the company colors, just like Home Depot was orange.
We would just like to know what the challenges may be before we come back and get
Yeah.
beaten up.
FW Web is colored. And rest not that.
So a consideration for me with color is, I have trouble visualizing how this building is going to sit on that, I view that site as having like two layers, right, there's the top where the old restaurant needs to be, and then there's down below where all the fun is, so.
We've kind of got, I can kind of show you. It's kind of existing conditions that we're still trying to finalize, but there's not, not a whole lot of gray change.
Not a whole lot of what?
Gray change, you know, so this is 510 here. It's 510, runs up here, and then this drops down into a hole. There's a ridge that runs here and then it drops down, so you've got a ridge along the road and a ridge behind. So it's plateaued, it just drops off, plateaus and drops off again to the bottom of the property.
So
So this is all pretty flat, I mean, you're talking, there's only two feet of gray change pretty much from there.
So really, only the high part is like right in here?
Yeah, I mean, you're talking two, two feet, four feet, in its entirety, pretty much where the building will be.
Comes right down, doesn't it?
It's interesting, the building actually, the structure is close to the road and the walkout.
Right, right. So we will see, this will all be basically at the same elevation as the existing building. Yes?
No, it'll be down on that.
It'll be low, it'll be down behind.
The parking area.
So it's like back in.
Well, I mean, this, I get, this building, you know, our roof is at, the roof of this existing building is 536, so you know, that's, that's 510, so you're
Well, I guess maybe what I'm trying to say is, if, if there would be a way that you could give us some sort of a rendering to help us visualize how it fits, you know, on the terrain. That could be nice.
Do you have trouble with that?
A rendering, that's a rendering right there. What do you mean?
You're looking for like a perspective.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, just.
I mean, maybe I'm the only one who can't see it.
Point out for us where, where this, point out this elevation.
That would be facing.
That elevation would be there. Okay, see this one here, this top one? That's that elevation.
Is on the facing as you drive past, that's what you see.
Point out this elevation.
That's this one.
That's that one, the west side, I mean, the east side. So point out this elevation.
The back of the building.
That's the very back towards the airport. This elevation here. Now point out that elevation there. That's what you see from Route 32 is this one right here. Okay.
So it's got some break up on the facade, which is.
The biggest red spot is facing the airport by the looks of it.
Barred red.
Given the targets. So that's. So what they're doing.
So. I don't know if it's possible for you to do a site from thirty-two. And I think this is what they're gonna get a shooting a straight level cross into the building and how much it's going to be above that sight line.
Yep, we'll do a perspective.
Yeah, that would be, that would.
Well, if you do that perspective, put in vegetation that you plan to be there. So it'll be with that.
Well, you know, right here, you know, we're anticipating the building to be somewhere around five ten, right? So add thirty-six feet to that. So we're gonna be up, you know, fair, that's five eighteen right, right here, closest to the intersection. So it's gonna be fairly prominent.
Five sixty-six. Right, right, because you're gonna be five feet below there.
The total building, how many square feet?
Footprint is forty-three and change.
That's a lot of red.
Well, yeah, they need to know it now, yeah.
Was counted to this color right here. Sign, signage, I had no problems that being red. What a, you said forty-two, forty-two square feet for me? Red? No. I mean, hardly stopping right on the road.
So let me just ask for the board's opinion if it was, if the expanse was broken up more, would that be more appealing as opposed to large expanses of the red? Now, obviously, that's their corporate color, like any company, they try to always carry their corporate color. It's a matter of, you know, how much facade, I guess, would be too much for you.
It looks like it might be a problem. So it looks like you better tone it down.
I'm trying to find, you know, the happy medium.
I'm looking at various sides. I can't visualize.
It's up to you guys to tone it down and the board necessarily can say that, yeah, that's too much red and what you come in with as a design, rather than the board saying, yeah, design it such and such. And then they don't like it.
Get a feel, because again, the front portion of the building that's facing the road is in fact broken up.
It is broken.
With the gray. So it's not as big as an expanse.
People may be stopping for a red light and going to halt.
They don't stop for red lights though.
I think all of the buildings are that color.
Yeah, it's, it's a very newer building that we built or even renovate.
Would you consider that all Dollar Generals are yellow? But you look at them in different places and the yellow is placed in different angles and in different ways. You can go by those stores and stunts and they don't quite as Dollar General as they do in others. FW Web is totally commercial company on that corner itself, things for plumbing and the like. You got the market there, though. It doesn't, we know it's FW Web and your sign has red in it. So if you could tone it down a bit, it would be really better for our, our town or our city. Because we are a town that was settled in the seventeen hundreds. And when I drive over to the post office or go thirty-two to Keene, I look across there and I I'm saying someone's with me, look at that view. Now, I do have a friend who says, what, the airport? No, lift your eyes, look at that view, you know, it's gorgeous. And you paint a forty-three hundred square foot building with at least fifty percent of it brilliant red. It's not very beautiful. It's, it's gonna stand out. If you paint it green, it'll stand out because there's nothing else like it anywhere in that area. It's wonderful. I'm glad you're coming, fine. I don't want you to run away. But if that color is terrible, we're right there.
Well, look at some options. I guess is the preference to just the street to do a little something different there? Is it, is okay if we keep the red towards the back and towards the customer entrance?
There you go. Can you go gray across the front there and then you can put your website in red?
Well, this, again, this is the, the side you're talking about, is that correct? And that's that parking lot side over there.
No.
No.
This is the street side.
That's, that's why I asked, but he, he brought up, but he brought up to begin with, this side right here with the name on it there. He's wondering if that would be acceptable and to tone down, down the rest of them. That's your entrance where they're coming in to the left side, which is the east side right there. So.
The building.
That's towards the.
On this end.
This is street side here, yeah.
On this end is the hundred eighty feet and the other one is two forty. Fifty-two.
I'm thinking if you could make it where your sign is, it's in the background could be.
Well, the, the sign park, in my opinion, the sign park isn't the problem. The expanse is right there. That's the street side, right there where the post office is adjacent to it, right there. Free would be, yes, since the road goes around there.
Fourth side, you can turn blind to pilots.
I don't think.
They can't seem to hit the airport these days anyway.
Given the lay of the land, I feel like the entire property will be extremely visible. Looking down on it almost from the road. I almost just want to see a big red barn there. Natural barn.
Can we go across the front street side gray with the red, with your?
Yeah, I can take a look at that with FW.
Make that sign in red?
I'll take a look at that. Come up with some options and.
You know, when you drop down thirty-two, you're much later, you get a port buildings. It really could have the appearance of very, we're all. I call Route thirty-two, Route, seen Route one hundred of, you know, in the line of, you know, sign, right? And that's the character that I like to see and continue to see. So in your design, you know, jobs, the tree, the landscaping, the building, the fence, drive it both ways. And so how much can we hide, right? Yeah, you want your name to be visible of sign, you have, you know, some home fans, but good, you know, be aware where your existence is going to be. Can you hide as much of that building?
Say hide, I'll say land.
Hide is better.
Yeah, I think it's, again, I think it's gonna be hard to, quote unquote, hide in the land. It's gonna be thirty, you know, thirty-eight feet above the road. We, we obviously can break up the facade and landscape and colors and try to soften it.
Hide it, no, no way. But if it doesn't have the screamin' out.
Yeah, so admittedly, we're early, so we'll, we'll add some landscaping and then we'll, I'll talk to Webb and we'll, we'll look at the color scheme a little bit.
We're gonna tone it down a bit, at least those, at least those three sides, maybe not the side, but even that side, you're still gonna see it. Yeah, see if they can tone it down a bit. You know, the building up the street that they, let's see the name, but the build machines up there. That's a dark gray. Take a look at that. Yeah, nano.
Yeah, take a look at nano. That's, it really blends in nicely.
And I know your color is red, obviously, but that's, that's a building that has gone through.
You also have to figure, red fades quickly in home. And think like ten years into the future, what does that red gonna look like besides directly ugly?
Hope that they make the finishes pretty good these days. They're supposed to be good for twenty-five years plus. We'll, we'll come back with some options.
Yep, see what you can do about that.
Nanotechnologies.
Yeah, the other, the other gray is actually rendering. It's a little darker than, the rendering looks lighter than what our other color is. Of course, we can print it.
We'll never back it on the.
Nope.
I think they have all idea of that.
Yep, we're.
Are they gonna be compressive to the center on top?
Rooftops, yes, there'll be HVAC equipment on it.
But I'm sure you're aware that's gonna have to be below that white.
Yes, that's where, the way the calculations are right now is where the building seems as though it'll fit under the plan, right? But there's units of that.
Anything else on the board? Then I guess not. Well, thanks for coming in and.
Yeah, no, we appreciate the feedback.
See what you can do for us and we'll see you again.
We do, we do want you to bring the business.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I suppose you're stealing from Keene. I like stealing Keene businesses. Call up, call up George and say, hey, we've got another.
Asking for this early conservation commission, so they'll be seeing you.
On our list, item C is a conservation commission. And they have the wild alive habitat and natural resources protection audit. Would you like to enlighten us on that a little bit?
You know, I have some more to say about it regarding what was already. I'm happy to answer questions and listen. But tell you a little bit about what we've been thinking. So we did sit down with Moosewood Ecological to talk about updating the open space plan to begin with, because that's twenty years old now. And also, you know, as we've been going back and forth with you all over the last year or more, maybe, about various ordinances and regulations and rewriting things. And you all get questions for us about the septic system setback. You know, we, we don't have a lot of expertise to be able to answer those questions on the commission. So we thought, well, Moosewood would probably be able to help us with that. And as it turns out, they do offer a natural resources protection audit where they'll sit down with the town and they'll go through, you know, the various ordinances and regulations and look at what they feel the level of protection is that it's offering for the town's natural resources and where we could maybe do better. And I think that would be of a big help, given the questions that we've had recently. So we thought we would do that, trying to be timely, we would do that first before we launch into the open space plan and kind of let that inform perhaps the open space plan. There's also some other options that we may decide to look into. One of them a little bit pricier, but they do offer wetlands evaluation. So, you know, if we felt like, okay, we're having a hard time answering which wetlands in Swansea might be more expensive than others, they'll come and actually go on the ground and look at our wetlands and be able to say, okay, maybe the town wants to talk about these particular wetlands being prime wetlands because they offer, you know, whether it be ecological services to the town or wildlife in town on purpose, you know, that means that they offer fewer services to the town. So that might be something we want to do over the next couple of years as well.
So how deep did they go into it? You know, they don't do a field survey on, you know, this one that we're talking about now, the one you're gonna have done now? They're just going over our regulations? So they do, go out in the field, do surveys?
No, I think that, I think that field survey would come in as they do the open space protection, I mean, the open space plan. So, you know, there may be some things that they find out later that we might want to back up a little bit and look at that again, depending on what they find in the field. But we just felt like we wanted to start with the audit just because you guys are in the process of looking at the regulations. And it may be that we're a little bit behind, you know, but I know it's a work in progress.
Yeah, it's ongoing. We do it all, you know, zoning and.
Did you do a natural resources inventory not too long ago? So that would, that would import. That was the boots on the ground part, right?
So at Moosewood Ecological has done a natural resources inventory and an ecological assessment for the town. And sort of the natural next step is to do the open space plan. And this will all play together. So, you know, we'll end up with, with a pretty complete picture, I think, by the time we're done with where we're at. I think it'll be really helpful.
Yeah, and then incorporate that into the master plan next time around.
Yes.
That'll be good. When are they gonna do it?
Well, we, we asked them if they could start immediately. We just wanted to, I did talk to the selectmen already and I want to talk to you all. We want to keep in touch about it. I know they'll, they will, as far as this process, want to meet with you all. So I, I'm still sort of, they just sent us a, a more detailed proposal. I need to pitch out to the HONPOM in June. We signed a contract and then we'll get started, I think, immediately.
And you've worked with them before or you have not?
I personally haven't, but the conservation commission has, as recently as two thousand nineteen, nineteen.
And I was definitely in the conversation with the conservation commission.
We haven't voted to sign the contract with them.
Okay, because how does it differ from this? It goes deeper? When it's done, and they did day one, day two?
Yeah, so I can, that, and that was explained, I think, in the material that, that we got in their proposal and how it kind of how it fits together. And yes, it goes, it goes deeper and then there'll be.
So the maps will, will be different than these maps?
Well, there'll be building on that. And they will, they're also, one of the things that they're pursuing is helping, so I mentioned y'all are coming up with a map and that's just something for the town. So it'll be accessible on our website, correct?
In a while.
Well, they will, they will be able to help give you maps that we can use on the town site as part of that. So that would be very helpful. So some of those maps that we already have have not changed. So that's great. So we don't have to pay for that, but some of them will need to be updated. Not probably not.
Those are like two thousand eighteen.
Yeah.
It's just there.
So there'll be more information and, and yeah, it'll be additional to that.
It looks like it covers more our ordinances than it does those maps there. Now, those maps will be used, but it looks like more covers wording, you know, what we have in our zoning.
This part of it, the natural resource protection audit will really.
Yeah, the one that you're doing now, yeah.
The regulations and the.
And that's.
And the open space plan is, you know, this was the two thousand. So this will be updated. Some of those maps that you were referring to will be included and updated versions of them will be included. But it'll also just kind of give us a, and I'm also excited that, you know, we're doing this Swansea Lake watershed management plan. And I think that information will be helpful too, to inform the open space plan, I would think. I think it'll sort of come together at the same time, roughly, twenty twenty-four. So hopefully we have a picture of what we need to do next and protecting Swansea Lake and updating some of our ordinances and regulations potentially and things like that.
All right, we'll see how they do. So how long do you think that might take?
So the timeline is, I think, this should be done by the end of twenty twenty-three, this audit part of it. And then we're hoping by the end of twenty twenty-four, we have to look at this.
Okay.
And there will be public meetings and.
It'll be almost time to go over the master plan again, that time, so, you know. All right, then it'll be interesting to see what they can.
Thanks for keeping us in the loop.
Thanks for keeping us in the loop.
Yes, thank you.
Pardon me, oh, you have a question.
Who manages the open space?
Who manages, you mean, on the ground, like?
Yeah, like, does the Conservation Committee, are they involved in managing the open space?
Yes.
So why do I get the impression that the Conservation Committee or the town would not want that other guys, would not want the man to have to back space? Did I misread that?
No, you didn't, you heard correctly, but that's just historically, the town has not wanted the responsibility to take over those parcels of land. They'd rather someone else do it.
Because of lawsuits or because it's a lot of invested time or because...
Probably maybe...
Open space don't need to have a...
Well, that didn't mean that it wouldn't be open space. It just meant that the town wouldn't have to run it. The selectmen wouldn't have to run it. That was the whole deal. And there haven't been too many of them, but...
Yeah, I put together a spreadsheet over the winter, which is still sort of a work in progress, but looking at all the little pieces all over town that the town owns that are potentially conservation and not, makes them all feel some things like that. Talking about little pieces of subdivisions like this and other bigger pieces like Montseas or Crescent and things like that. But potentially things that the Conservation Commission might have to look at. And there's a lot of them. And I don't even know where some of them are, even looking at the map. So that's why I asked that question, is would we be adding to that? And, you know, what is our liability as the town if we're not monitoring that and something happens to it? You know, it's an approach line or some kind of law is broken or movement is violent. What would our responsibility be? And some of those places are probably kind of hard to get to. I mean, I don't know if you have to go through somebody's backyard to get to some of them. Public access is not going to miss.
That's why Jeff, we had problems with them before. Some people wouldn't let along their land, you remember?
I wasn't here for that.
Oh, that's right. Well, when he came, he would tell us.
Yeah, people don't have to give permission to...
Right, he has, Jeff has to get permission to go on some people's property with these steps. And some people say, you know, I don't...
That's what private property is all about, though. I mean, that's what partially founded this country, private property.
It's hard to know, but we don't know what the neighbors have been doing on them. You know, have the neighbors been deciding to put a shed on them or... Yeah, right. Can't go in. And I ran into, I was starting to monitor some of the pieces, like the place, a piece adjacent to Honey Hill that the town owns, and there's no boundary markers. So I'm just sort of wondering, am I hoping I'm on the right property? And I have no idea.
It's not... In there, yeah?
Yeah, well, yes.
What was my question?
Thank you.
Anything else?
I think these properties do not have street access.
Yes, right, well, I don't know.
Yeah, it's well landmarked, you know. Theoretically, there's not supposed to be landmarked properties in New Hampshire, but we know there are. But theoretically, they're not. If you can walk into it, it's not landmarked.
What, didn't the town have one that they sold recently?
Recently, two of them, I thought there were two of them, I think, they sold.
Were two down in...
Yeah, near town, oh, in Chesterfield, I don't know about Chesterfield.
There's one in Chesterfield.
Yeah, there was one in Chesterfield they sold.
Well, and there's nobody getting to it without going through other people's property. Did they, I thought they had that for sale.
Yeah, it sold some number of months ago. I think it was purchased by one of the butters.
Good, I thought it did.
Which makes sense.
Yeah. There's another one on the hill on the left across from the fairgrounds up in there.
Yeah, was it Page Land?
Well, I have...
Another cross.
There's townland up on that, what is that hill, the name of that hill, crush?
Well, Huggins.
Mount Huggins, yes. And there was some townland up there, I believe, and Glenn used to talk about it.
Yeah, he used to talk about a lot of that stuff.
And my brother.
They all hunted up there, they grew up over in there, yeah.
And it's not accessible.
But...
There is one, it's up there from Huggins Drive. But they're probably using that light.
Oh, is there? They have it right away up there.
Yeah, there's, they're all on this hallway down on Huggins Drive. There's a group up, there's like a classic road, but the airport has access. The thing that white...
Okay, anything else on that?
Thank you.
Thank you. You too. And we can, we had our plan reading workshop in the beginning of the meeting. I'm going over that other...
Smart.
Do that.
Good job.
So any other business required at the meeting?
I have a thing that I threw in front of everybody on the table before you got here. And it is the legal response to the site plan regulations and what they don't like, what they'd like us to revise. And I think the most important thing on the list is the first thing listed, which is basically looking at our multi-tenant process.
Yeah.
And home-based business. And I was not able, Michael Granley, this came in last night, so I was not able to touch base with Michael today to determine if we have a select board process for home-based business, because I'm not aware of one. That does not mean that one doesn't exist, so it's sort of...
That came, when I was putting that came from, well, not this one. Came from like that little one that I used to have there. That's where it came from. And so we'll have to see if that's still in there, because that's why it ended up with the selectmen. Because I always thought it should have been the planning board that decided that. Well, the planning board had the option, I think. The planning board passed it on to the selectmen because they didn't want to deal with it. So that's how they ended up with it, but I don't think that...
Did they still sign off?
They do, but as Sarah said, I don't think they have any prerogative, I mean, any guidelines to go by to do it. They just say, oh, that one looks like one and that one doesn't look like one.
Yeah.
So that's what...
I always felt like it was just sort of a no, you know? Because they kind of know what's going on with the town, but it wasn't...
Yeah, no, that wasn't it. They needed an authority to decide if it was one or not before they continued it.
So is yourself, I'm going to ask how many vehicles are going to be using your driveway per day? Are they...
We do in our regulations and the...
I know, but I mean, I thought my home-based business was two. I can think of several. One...
Well, now we have a distinction now. We have home occupation and home-based business. We divided it up. We have, home-based business comes before ours. Home occupation is granted outright if it doesn't change any character of the neighborhood or anything.
Right, and you don't even know it's there when you go by.
That type of business, yeah.
So, I mean, I think that the biggest part of this is the question of site plan review. And so what I'm going to sort of recommend, and you guys can totally disagree with me on this, but since we have other things, like, I feel like we're this close to getting these regulations implemented with the changes, but I feel like we already have a lineup started for the next round of provisions. Should we take legal suggestions into the next round and proceed with implementation in an upcoming meeting so that we have parking and landscaping? Or do you want to go through and try to address all of these before implementation?
My opinion would be, let's take these and look them over for our next meeting and decide, there might be one or two, like you're talking about, more important to put into this round of regulations and leave the rest for another round of regulations, maybe. Anybody else?
I know you guys have an opportunity to really scrutinize.
Anytime we can research to see if there's anything in there about the selectmen.
Yeah, or do that, right, just to see what the points are and maybe the planning board will take, board will take that back. I'm sure the selectmen wouldn't care whether the planning board had it.
From what I could gather, some of them are pretty no-brain.
There's a couple that's...
I mean, and this was me like trying to read with my fingers in my ears, because it's dense.
It is.
But I think, I think for the most part, we could probably pretty easily accept these right now, like today. You know, not today, please, but, you know. I don't think we're going to choke on most of these.
We'll look them over then for the next meeting and decide.
Put this back on the agenda for the next meeting. Okay.
And you're going to review the section.
I did review that section, and I only encountered about thirty seconds by Steve Buckley talking about that. And I watched the whole section and I watched the question and answer thing that came at the end. So I'm still not seeing anywhere where Stephanie Verdale talks about preliminary consultation. Okay, yeah, you keep looking. I mean, I'll do my best. Tomorrow is probably going to be devoted to... Minutes, gosh, you guys talk a lot.
Again, that's about, that's...
That's why she needs to do time.
You're talking about, you're discussing with more time for the preliminaries.
The requirement of a preliminary.
Requirement of one, okay. Whether we can require it or not, because we're not required to do it, but whether we can require one to be done. Is that what you're talking about?
We can require it, but the advantages or disadvantages or communities that actually do require it, so that if we want to consider something like that, we can look at their regulations or talk to them and find out how that works for them if you guys want to consider it.
See, I don't know. I still think that we pretty much have enough time to look these things over. You know, one, I know the other time, there are times that we won't. But that last one that brought a lot of this up, the one up here, which we won't mention, that had a lot of extenuating circumstances through the ZBA, some of it. Most of the time, I think that we have enough time to review these. And if we don't have enough information, if we need another study or whatever it is, and the applicant does not want to give us an extended of time, extension of time, then we have it in our capability just to deny it because they don't have enough information. We couldn't on the other one because they had already been done in the ZBA and it's taken, everyone through the courts and all that stuff. The planning board can do that, and if they say no, then it's no. You know, it's to their advantage to say, okay, we'll give you another thirty days with something to look it over, and we do the study and have it done. That's my view of it, rather than requiring a preliminary on these.
Well, again, if we have it in the regulations that is required, we can waive it if we see or feel as though, when they come in to do that, that everything is complete.
But again, with that preliminary, it's only conceptual. You know, we went a little bit beyond conceptual with the ones in tonight, but it's only basically the concept and the zoning laws involved and those types of things. We can't really get too deep.
It's also...
Just a second, let me, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, but we just did that. Last, no, previous meeting with the woman who wanted to put her or extend her beauty salon, because she came in for a conceptual. We said, okay, we looked at it, everything looks good, we'll go to the meeting.
She actually didn't comment for conceptual.
No, she didn't. She came in to have the planning board decide whether we wanted a site plan review or not.
Right.
And the board could do that. Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
And there had been a beauty...
What were you going to say, Steve?
Question is, the running regulations, shall versus may.
Yeah, shall is directed.
Yeah. Board may request, not that the board shall request. He is permitted, shalls may.
But I guess the thing to ask ourselves is, do we need it? You know, it's beneficial mainly to the applicant rather than to the planning board to come in for something like that. Like these guys, for instance, they were just in here. You know, it came up that that's a pretty big red building up there and the color might be a problem, but had they not been in for that, they might have gotten through the whole site plan there. And we get to the very end to decide it and say, well, that color's off, we aren't going to do it. Go back, you know, it was to their advantage, but they didn't have to do that. But I mean...
It's going to save them some time.
It's not a time thing, yeah, it'll save them some time. But again, it's not a time thing, I think, for us. But, you know, we can think about it. But it's very limited as to what we can really discuss. We can't get into the, we can get into the basics, but not into the specifics of the plans when we do the preliminary part of it. Designer review phase, that's different. Then we can get into things like where tonight, you know, designer review. But other than that, it's basically, will it fit on the property? Are you going to be able to hit the setbacks? Are you going to be able to do the drainage? Are you going to be able to do this or that? Is it going to be too big or whatever? Those are just general conceptual things.
Under the state's regulations, under 67444, to under J, oh, it says, a site plan review regulations, which the planning board adopts may, and then under J says require when are reviewed of site plans.
Yeah, so it gives us permission to do it. We can do it, we want to do it.
So we can require.
Yeah, we can require it in our regulations. But do we need to? That's the question, that's what I'm trying to get to. Do we need to do that? Well, we do. We have it in there that they can if they want to.
They.
Yeah, but we can't require it, but...
We can require.
But I think, why do we need to? Why should we do? That's the question I'm trying to, you and I are going back and forth on. And we're trying to answer, do we need to do that?
Need to, or sometimes not. So in the case of open space?
That's why we have the right to say, that's not required.
But if it's a large development or whatever coming up there, I would imagine Sarah and Mike too, probably, but Sarah especially, would say it might be beneficial to you to come into the board, like these guys did with...
That's exactly why they came.
Yeah, because suggested. And that's, on that side of it, that's where it should be, I think. Sarah knows, you know, the size of a project or something like that, as what the board...
And it was the same with Dr. Dexter as well.
Yeah.
You know, whose thing seemed pretty complicated, and I suggested he come in for a preliminary with all of you so that...
And that helps, yeah.
To try to put together a better project before he comes in for a designer review or site plan review or the subdivision or, you know.
Could we order it such that it would be required to company for the students being Sarah, Mike, for review? And then kind of us?
I don't know, I wonder if we could do that. They do that anyway, but I'm wondering, because there are some things. Like the planning board can authorize the land use boards to do certain things and to, like, for instance, we authorize the land use board now to approve signs. And we don't do that anymore here, things like that. I don't know if we can require them to go to land use for that. It's hard to say, that's an idea.
It's helpful, you know, it's like getting department review. It's like getting the file, you know, not their sign drop.
And they should want that, yeah.
Because they're not seeing the thing yet, but they can give us some ideas. You know, this is something that, you know, we should pay attention to or something.
Sarah has an idea of what one likes and goes with that. And Sarah could turn around and say, yeah, if you want to go with that, you can, but I would suggest.
I actually do that already. I mean, I do try and prepare applicants based on the feedback that I've seen you guys deliver and the regulations that the community has. You know, if you come to the board with that, it's going to be a hill. And I let them know that and often things are revised before you see them.
That's helpful for us and for them too, but helpful for us that, you know, waste their time, our time. And basically, it's like, basically, that's a preliminary review that you guys do, really, because you're going over the zoning regulations, you know, lots of just general terms and that type of stuff.
It must be something you have to do.
He doesn't work on any of this stuff usually.
But, you know, sometimes I think, you know, the regulations that we have are designed to cover the entire state.
They are.
And we happen to be very lucky in that we have an example of a staff planner, you know, in our pocket. Whereas a lot of towns, they don't have anything, you know, and they're just flailing away. So I think it's wonderful what you do.
Thank you.
Yeah, helps a lot.
But I agree, I do think that provision is in there. Well, this is why I really want to find the section that Richard has been bringing up from the Planning and Zoning Workshop from a couple of weeks back that OPD put on and BEA and NHMA, my God, they have so many letters, to see what they said about it, if the requirement for that really is more intended for communities that don't have staff, because a lot of the state has communities with no staff. And, you know, they have the Regional Planning Commission that supports their meetings, but they don't have full-time planning staff and code enforcement and all that, so...
The small pounds, yeah, I agree.
And in those cases, the requirement of a preliminary consultation makes sense because that's the, that would take the place of what staff does when an application comes to the town.
Yeah, that makes sense, maybe that is... Yeah, that makes sense, maybe that is how.
I'll swing it to the bottom of that and perhaps, you know, she, I did not pick up what town she is from or involved in, that may be exactly why they made it, the requirement.
Yeah, and, and it makes perfect sense.
It does, yeah.
In those cases, because you do need more time to review it.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, I have, hopefully, at least a three-week lead time before you guys see anything to review it and get more information and request changes so that when you guys see it, it's as close to a complete application as I can force out of an applicant with as much information as I can get from them.
Yep.
Well, I don't know if you can see the color.
I saw the color red a couple of days ago when they submitted that and I thought, hmm, let's see what the board says.
Well, see, I can't remember, I didn't bring my phone in with me, but I sent a message to you last week about a training that's coming up in Lee, New Hampshire. Wasn't that about CRS development?
I can't remember.
Was that a, was that a, I just saw it too.
I think I forwarded that to the.
It's over, it's way over on the Seacoast though to go, if you wanted to go.
To Lee, that's not towards the Seacoast.
Well, it's pretty close. Closer than Lee.
You guys are something else. I mean, I grew up in Ohio, if you wanted to go from the Ohio River to Lake Erie, then you could complain. It's two mile, a two, a two hour drive. Nothing.
Too far.
All right, let's get back to Swansea.
It's pretty interesting and informative.
Anything else we need to discuss this evening? If not, motion to adjourn is in order?
So.
Motion to adjourn by Jane, seconded by Richard. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate the same. Aye, aye, opposed? Okay, great.